I will open the joint work session of the Oregon City Commission and Oregon City Planning Commission for Monday, July 25, 2016. With that, I will introduce Michelle Delk, and you are with which one?
I'm with Snowhata.
With Snowhata, who is going to lead our discussion and information tonight. I would also like to introduce Carol Marie Reed as one of the other project partners. So, Michelle?
And I'll also introduce Matt McManus from Snowhata.
Oh, I apologize, Matt.
Thank you. So, thank you all for taking some of the time to talk to us. I think we've actually been asked at 8:00 to 6:30 to complete this part of the discussion. So, I've had the opportunity to meet several of you and our team over the last few days in front of the board. So, what we wanted to do is maybe give you kind of a quick presentation to run through a little bit of background on where we've been so far on the project and a little more focus on programming and where we're headed in terms of programming, we've heard from the community. And then we'd like to spend the majority of the time actually going through a few questions and talking with you and getting direct feedback. So, with that, again, just to remind everyone, we often refer to ourselves as the Design Collective, and the Design Collective is made up of Snowhata, Mary Reed, and dialogue. We are really together leading the design process with the support of, as you all I'm sure know, many other consultants with a lot of expertise in specific areas, including Jessica from JLA who's taking notes for us today, as well as many other engineers and support folks. Everything that we're doing is really building on the framework plan and the vision plan that was established prior to us being engaged in this process. So, we often refer back to the framework plan and that this is really a process for the -- to develop a Riverwalk design that is built upon those principles. So, we are really working to bring it to the next level of refinement. Our team was -- we were selected a little bit over a year ago. We went through a process to refine our scope and get everything moving, and we've really been actively engaged for probably five months or so now in a phase that we refer to as pre-concept design. And what that really means in essence is that we are furthering investigation in terms of technical investigation, hearing more feedback from the community and from stakeholders about more specific interests in the kinds of activities and program that should happen on the site. We've had, as I believe you're all to speak, we had a community meeting in March where we had about seven or eight hundred people come. I believe you've had an update on that, so we won't talk too much detail about that. Since that time, we have been continuing more small group stakeholder discussions. We've had many of those over the last few days while the team has been in town to dig in a little bit deeper and learn more about some specific questions, and those are some of the same questions we have for you that we want to talk about later today. I also just want to take this to say that we're also working on this development, a study, a strategy for the privately owned personal, we're trying to figure that into the conversation and look at what, you know, opportunities there are for the Riverwalk and the development to move forward. So, this slide where it says "today" was really this past Saturday. We were able to attend the First City Festival, and we had a booth there where we spent the afternoon talking with people, and it was a really great way for us to have some one-on-one conversations with folks from the community. We, I think, had a mix of people who didn't know very much at all about the project and came to us and said, "Just tell me what this is and what it's going to be." And we had a nice mix of people who have really been involved and have been giving feedback along the way and wanted to just have an update on where we were. We had a lot of questions about when is this going to be built and what is it going to be. So, but I take that as really positive in the sense that people are excited and just want to know what's happening next. So, looking forward just a little bit, we are continuing with some of that stakeholder engagement. We are developing what we're -- we're testing those ideas in models and drawings and workshops with not only the design team but representatives from the client group. So, as we hear things, we also are testing. We'll be developing that into materials to have another community engagement meeting this coming fall where we will, at that time, be bringing initial ideas about the design for the Riverwalk, alternatives, so to say, or options. That being said, it is still the pre-concept phase, which is really intended to be testing ideas. So, those are design ideas, but it's not coming back with a concept for the Riverwalk, but more ideas for how to approach it. And then we'll move into the concept phase and continue working towards a refined concept design. I think it's important to remind everyone, including ourselves, that this process and this design really is informed by the four values that were established during the visioning phase. So, the Riverwalk, in essence, is not only about public access or walkway along the river, but it is truly about integrating public access, historic and cultural interpretation, habitat, and economic redevelopment. And so, our charge is to really learn as much as we can about what will inform each of those and begin to translate that into the physical Riverwalk design. We've had additional programming discussions where we have started to focus in on not only what people would like to do on the Riverwalk, but who is the audience and what is unique about the potential for the site. We've spent time onsite and in client workshops, so every time we go back, we learn more and we see more. As you all know, it's a very complex site and constantly are discovering new pieces, sometimes underground, where you don't even know that you're not standing on the ground. We had the community event in March that was very well attended, and we heard a lot of really valuable feedback from the community. Am I not talking louder than you? Okay. Oh, speak directly into mic. We heard good feedback. That was an opportunity to not only talk about activity or specific program, but to hear more detail from people about experiential qualities and a strong diversity of experiences and qualities that the site can really encompass. And we've summarized and taken a look at that feedback, and we were able to even bring some boards which are behind me to the festival to share back with the community what we had learned. So, fundamentally, we have heard over and over again that the Riverwalk is more than a walkway, and I think everybody is on board that this is an exploration for what the Riverwalk can become. We've broken it into different program drivers. From what we've heard, we have kind of sorted that information, and there's a program that can really be very specific to the Riverwalk and the Riverwalk elements. There are shared programs that we see opportunity that really they kind of cross over between public and private that maybe -- and help to enhance the Riverwalk experience. And there are things that we've been hearing, that feedback that, in our view, begins to really inform the development. And as Carol said, we're also looking at the broader site and the potential for the developments and the development study and how to inform that through private development and private opportunities. So, I won't linger on this slide because we have slides to summarize each of these, but these are the key program drivers. We have, I believe it's eight, or is it nine? Eight, that I will just touch on quickly for you. Certainly, as you might guess, access and viewing of the falls is a key driver and a key interest. And a lot of the conversation, and one of the things we would love to hear more from you today, is about the seasonality of fall, that it's a very different place and different times of year, and that we want to really make sure we're considering all those seasons and all those times. I think today even PGE is maybe working on the dam, and there's very little or no water today, so that's an important thing to be considering. Of course, there are many different ways to imagine movement and circulation through the site, through different types of walkways and paths, bike trails, a lot of opportunity to think about that and how that integrates with habitat, with historic and cultural interpretation, and we're exploring all of those. We've heard a lot of feedback about having gathering and event spaces that, again, that it's not only a path or a move way through the site, but places for people to gather. And that providing access to the river and having activities that embody the fact that the river is here and we're connected to the river is really important, and that can be a wide variety of activities. And even earlier today, we had a stakeholder workshop where we were able to spend having talk more specifically with different groups about the kinds of activities they'd like to see. Certainly habitat restoration, but also interpretation and educational opportunities. So, going beyond preservation and restoration, but how can we help create a place where people can really engage and learn from that, as well as the historic reuse and cultural interpretation opportunities. And one message I think we've heard very strongly from many different people is, as I'm sure you all know, this is a place that embodies a lot of history, whether it's a natural history or geologic history, there's any number of histories from early settlement to pre-settlement to the industrial history, and of course honoring and respecting the presence of Native Americans. And we've begun to have conversations with the Confederate tribes, and we are starting to hear more from them about what they're interested in seeing here. And then I think one of the last things to touch on is that not everything has to be programmed. There can be spaces that simply are there for people to enjoy in many different ways, and there are even places on the site today that are great for overlook and viewing. There are really unique features on the site that may not be necessarily a building that could be reused, but just other features and materials that are really special to the site, and thinking about how we can incorporate those to really connect to this place and bring forth that history, and a lot of really great spaces. One of the things that we've really been focused on, that we talk a lot about, is that this is not a place that is just a blank slate and that very careful subtraction, very careful addition, maybe reusing elements, and there's a lot that's here that can really be embodied in the future of the place. And there are other program drivers that are still being explored that may not necessarily be drivers, but we've heard strong interest in, and that ranges from community gardens to farmers' markets to restaurants and cafes and other kinds of activities that can be integrated. So, we're moving towards concept design. We've had many workshops, we kind of covered the recent activities over the last few days and the upcoming community event. So, with that, I want to turn it over to you for your questions, and then we have some additional questions for you that we would love to --
What are you, 1950? Come on, love. So, easiest way, raise your hand, I'll recognize you, we don't have the electronics up here. So, questions? Commissioner Megelberg?
How is it going on the economic study, and what are some early thoughts around that?
Well, let's see. We have just begun that process, and we have some initial feedback from the team that's supporting that effort. Right now, it's, I guess, in summary, it's been looking more at the region and the area and giving us feedback on what the kind of recent trajectories and what the current activities or recent activities have been to start to inform how we think about this site. In short, the conversations I think we've had have been that that's a really important baseline and base for testing our ideas, that there's a strong view that we've heard, and I think we intend to support that. We're also making a market here. So, there's what the market can support today, and there's what this may create as a future market, and making sure that we're always looking at both so that we're well informed, but we're also, I guess, aspirational about it. You want to add something?
So, one of the main focuses of the preliminary work on the development strategy has been to identify areas of opportunity and for further consideration. So, the design team worked closely with a market guidance team. We studied the report produced by Rick Williams related to traffic demand management. We also talked closely with Dana Webb of your Public Works with our teammate Paul DeGio from KPF. And then we also looked towards cultural landscape report, the Riverwalk itself, and identified the things that we felt needed further coordination and consideration in the next round of work.
Is it too soon for a proposal?
A proposal from you or a proposal from us?
Yeah, from me.
No, I think we'd be happy to hear that.
Happy to hear it.
You got a $50 million check to go on?
Yeah. Where's my rabbit? Well, you've heard me before say this, but, you know, if this thing is half as successful as we hope it's going to be, and it probably will be because it's going to attract a lot of people from a lot of different areas, you're going to have a lot of traffic down there, and that means a lot of people, and that means a lot of surfacing of people, just not protection and exposure of the river itself. You better put some porta-potties in there. And what I mean by that, you better design in there some permit facilities for a lot of different kids, the handicapped, disabled, old guys like myself, okay? Because that's a long walk. Okay, now, a lot of people, a lot of traffic, a lot of activity, we've all been there. Been to Disneyland before, entirely out in the first block because you're moving with other people. And what I'm proposing, what I think is needed, more than just, you know, just something fancy, just artwork, is a place where people can rest, sit down and rest and just catch their breath.
Hey, folks, when we're talking, let's move the microphone around because other than that, the TV can't get the -- can't hear the sound.
But what I'm proposing is something that I think would connect the commercial aspects, private enterprise aspects and investment of the site and the Riverwalk itself, and that would be a place where people can come upon an open space, and I'm going to call it the Peace Plaza. You just get -- and just sit down, take a deep breath, and relax, and just enjoy the ambiance down there. And have a place where people could sit down and have a place where they could reflect for a moment and change diapers, for God's sakes. Because it happens, folks, and that's how you protect the river, okay? You have a place to. But I would call it the Peace Plaza, and the reason I would call it that is because 3,000 miles is a long place, a long way to come from Plymouth Rock, you know, all the way out here, and those people put up with so much stuff to get here. And when they got here, I think they had to -- they're just looking for a place to relax and catch their breath and what have you. And then I would also dedicate it to our first responders, and our first responders would be those people that built this country and are keeping it together right now, and that's our peace officers, our fire departments, or anybody that collectively comes together to keep this country safe. And then I would also propose a reflection pool somewhere in that open space where it would contribute to the peace of the site. And I'll put up the money. I'll buy all of it, okay? Yeah, no, you can put -- no, just --
That's very simple.
I don't care how much it costs, okay? GoFundMe. Now, the other thing you might want to consider, too, is if you can prove that your people, and I think Tom, where's Tom?
Tom's over there.
Tom's people, you made the motion, I think, on the concept plan based on your people coming across, and I know Damon may have some people that came across the country, distant relatives. But if you can prove that you were related or you have relatives, just have a brick with their name on it, you know, and put it in the Peace Plaza somewhere, somewhere, just like they did at Portland. And that's pretty much my proposal, but I think it would do more to -- that Portland City puts some thought into this, and it would connect the United States, I think, from the west coast to the east coast. That would be my thought.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Commissioner Guile?
I need to hear my voice. The TV, I know. One thing, I think I'm the only retailer here down on Main Street, so I get a lot of input from people. I'm amazed how many people come from Westland or Lake Oswego area over the bridge and also from all across the country, because I ask everybody who comes in my store, because I'm trying to get them to relate and buy something. Hi, where are you from? You're locally? But everybody I've -- so many I've talked to, not everybody, have said, "We hope that they'll put signs around there of great photo ops, opportunities where you can maybe --"
Take a selfie?
A little selfie, yeah. People are always looking for good photographs of something like that, and without all the Westland side in view, but maybe some points along there going, like you go out a little ways, you know, like a couple of feet, and you can reach out and take a picture. That might help some of the tourists to be able to take some of those better photos without including other sites they don't want to catch. Just a thought.
Commissioner Meyer?
As was mentioned earlier today, you know, weather and water volume are a factor, and so really the best time to watch the falls is in the winter time when it's raining or cold. So, the Riverwalk should incorporate a way for people to be comfortable seeing the falls at any time of year, and whether that's covering or having it lower under some of the existing ceiling space or whatever, I think that would really make it much more attractive over the whole year.
Commissioner Smith? So, a question, but also some comments. I have -- we all have our really specific plans in our head.
Yes.
And sometimes more than one, and they keep evolving over time, and I think that's what's so great about this project. There's so many moving parts, so many different partners, so many different pieces to this. So, I'm going to ask a question to the design team and specifically, I think, to the event that we had over the weekend, because I had a booth at the festival over the weekend as well, had a lot of dialogue with a lot of people, and no matter what you're talking about in Oregon City, whether it's someone from our town that just came for this festival, somehow all the conversation ends up moving to the mill site at some point, which is incredible. So, in the last three days, I've heard from a lot of people, talked to a lot of people. We have, as a consensus of commission, kind of talked about the White Water Park. There was the work session with the partners that talked about the concepts for the White Water Park or what -- how to add that in or not add it in as we move forward with that conversation. I will tell you, though, that every day someone wants to talk about it. And so, you know, all of these different public groups and even in the design, the ability to add that in or not add it in, you know, I understand the money and I understand all the other components of that. But in the general public from the weekend, what are you hearing from people if that topic came up from the public? Because I'm hearing a lot of public support, and even going with family members today, that's what they wanted to talk about. Without being brought up by myself, I just know that, you know, what are you hearing? What did we hear over the weekend in terms of that part of the -- that part of the planning? Because I'm curious if it's what we as commissioners are hearing or if it is a mix, because we're all listening to different groups of people. So, if you could speak to that at all, it would be helpful.
Do you want to pass the mic across to --
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Well, I think what I -- I'm happy to kind of give you my direct experience, and I'm sure Matt and Carol can do the same, but I also would like to say that we haven't had a chance since Saturday to actually convene our group, and so we're not really speaking for the larger collective. From my experience, especially on Saturday, I didn't actually have a lot of people bring it up. A lot of the folks I talked to, it was absolutely a mix, is the simplest answer, where a lot of the people that did bring up specifically the White Water Park in my conversations were more just asking about the process and clarifying. A lot of people were asking if it was coming from an outside proposal or if this team was looking at it, and they were more just looking for information. So, I didn't hear -- I can't say that I heard too much either way personally.
And I would say, based on the First City Festival, my experience was very similar to that. I do think externally there is confusion about what kind of proposal that is.
Sure, yeah.
And I think a lot of people have good legitimate questions about it. We think kayaking is a possibility in terms of activity on site, but we're also waiting to weigh other factors, including a decision from the project partners, which are made up of, you know, Oregon City, Metro, Clackamas County, and State of Oregon in terms of how deeply they would like us to investigate that particular proposal or look at other alternatives as well, so.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I know what the city's argument is. I know the county's arguments are, and I was at the work center, so I'm hearing that dialogue, and so really I'm just wanting to see if that is matching the public dialogue. My feeling is, from sitting down at the First City Festival, a lot of those people, a lot of those people were not from Oregon City, which was -- is great, but because it does tell us what people are thinking, and I think that's maybe why topics maybe like the White Water Park maybe have come up, because I think locally people know that that's out there as a dialogue, but -- or at least more so than locally, because I -- but I think locally it's been more known as people, maybe that's why it hasn't been brought up. Because I just, I'm trying to balance what I'm hearing in meetings versus what I'm hearing from the public in this town, that they don't match up. And so, that's kind of -- but I think there is definitely a -- oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I think there is definitely a -- not a huge understanding of whether that proposal is a city proposal or whether it's -- so I think, you know, so having that dialogue, people understand it a little bit better, but I know a lot of people still have questions.
Matt, did you have anything to add to that?
I think most of it was covered. The one thing I did hear, and it's not just related to White Water Park, but pretty much any idea that we heard, is that just to respect the integrity and the authenticity of the site, no matter what it is that we end up doing there and that we decide together, that as long as the authenticity of the site is maintained, that people seem to be really in support of it.
By that, you mean no commercialization? What do you mean?
I think it's -- I think what that means is up to us to decide, and I think it's going to be part of the process that we're undertaking together.
And I think it's resolved by the four core values, that, you know, we're not going to go in and bulldoze everything and build shiny glass towers, you know? There are too many people involved in this for it to take too far of a right or left turn.
When I say "us," I mean collectively the entire body of people involved in the project, not us as a design team.
Can I just add one more thing? What people want to see and what perhaps is achievable from a regulatory standpoint is a very, very deep and serious conversation, and I think there is a point by which we need to know whether this would be something to be considered or not. We just spent the last few hours with, you know, people that are, you know, have boating as their expertise and have water recreation expertise. We've also spent time with some of the people that do the regulatory permitting, and it's a very, very difficult and long conversation, and to be honest, there could be some delays as a result of that permitting process. So, I'm sure you all discussed that and take that into consideration.
Commissioner McGriff?
Well, since Rocky talked about his experience on Saturday, I'll throw in my two cents, since I was also down there on Saturday, saw Tom Guile as well as Rocky and a few other people. So, what I got out of the people that passed by the booth that I was at is people wanted to know about authenticity, and I will agree with what Matt said. They wanted to know about what the community was thinking about how to interpret the history. People were very excited. People were very excited about knowing that the story of the evolution of that site was going to be available to them. People knew snippets of it, but they didn't know the entire story. And I said, I spoke about the core values, and of course, I then said, go down there, they're down there at their booth. I can only give you so much. And then, that was very exciting to me. People were genuinely interested in the stories that are going to be told. They wanted to, they had questions about, well, how do you think the mill, the mill buildings are going to be repurposed, and you know, I mean, sure, I said, well, we could spend all day talking about that, but I said, that, I said, the thing that's important to remember about what we are going through is that there is a process, and the process is evolving through the four core values, and that is what's going to set the tone and the standards. So I said, not one idea is going to take precedent over another idea at this point. Nobody asked me about anything to do with whitewater, so, but that was, you know, and I was, I was there in the booth, and then I came back later on for the beer garden aspect and talked to a lot more people.
Yes.
Actually, to tell you the truth, the part that, I wanted Portland cider, and they were already done, they were gone. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the question you asked, Carol, which was about the seasonality of the falls, and I think we have an excellent example in the Portland metro area that maybe might be a model, is that, one of the things that I like about the Chinese Classical Garden is it doesn't matter what time of year you go to that facility, you get a different experience. And the rainy time there is probably one of the most exciting times, because you see the, the facility interacting with the visitor in a different way, whether it's rainy, sunny, cloudy, it has a different appeal every time, and it's not saying that everybody likes that appeal, but it's a different facility, and I think that what Renata brought up about experiencing it at, you know, high waterline, there's some other experience that we could also have during the time, that there's low water, because you're going to see the rocks more exposed, so there may be a whole geology component, there, there's just so many opportunities to utilize the climate to help us interpret, depending on what time of the year it is, when you're there, and you're going to see something different. And I think that that is, that's got such a potential that it will be very exciting, so hopefully, people will not just go to it during one time of year and only experience that one aspect, but maybe come back at different times of the year and experience it in different ways. And I've, I've been down there when it's been raining, and frankly, and this current configuration is quite miserable, but you know, umbrellas work. So I think that's something that, that will be really critical, and I think the point that you made about balancing the core values on the slide was, again, to me, that's, I keep going back to that every time, I go back to that, I go back to the balancing, I go back to the whole issue of, again, it has yet to be determined what it will be, and that is being moved forward by the design team, by the elected body, by the community, and when we get there, we'll get there. So nobody should try to push to the head of the line, is kind of what I wanted to just say.
Commissioner Shaw, you got any for us?
Just a little tidbit here. But this project just continues to amaze me, because all of this input, design teams and, and groups and stuff, going after this project that's privately owned.
Yeah.
How often do you see that, you know? And we've, that's, it's just, this free flow of design ideas and stuff, and this thing that we don't even own, and it's privately owned, and we're getting to do this. You know, and I don't know how many projects you get to do this where it's a privately-owned property and not a municipality, you know, so this is pretty cool, so. My, my thoughts have always been that I wanted to see it a very pedestrian site, that we can control vehicular traffic through there as much as possible at the beginning of the site, and then it becomes very pedestrian there forward. And my other concern, obviously, is with the traffic, and I think Matt, we might have talked about that a little bit on Saturday down there, but it's a concern for me, you just have to look at this map right here, and you can see that one intersection right there. This is all going to happen.
Fifth and Main.
At the wheel.
And 99.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. How, everything's going to happen there, you know, and, and if the locks open up, we're going to have people coming from there also, you know, so that's kind of my concern. I've lived here since 75, you know, and-
You're a young man.
Yes. Anyway, so, but it's all great, you guys, so I appreciate all your efforts here, so.
I've only lived here since 76.
Got you. Got you.
What he's saying is that he wasn't Oregon.
Wait a minute.
That's right.
I was convinced the ball first.
Oh.
That's our reality, right there.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Rocky.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Well, I think what we want to do, and keep this in, not in the back of our mind, but right at the tip of the spear, is we want to protect this piece of property, the integrity of it, and the process. And I think that it's subject to due process through our zoning regulations and our comprehensive plan, and the core values. And the thing that bothers me about the mention of this whitewater thing is, to me, it hasn't gone through a review process with the concept plan, and it's starting to, I think, confuse the public, because they want to know what the status of it is. And I think the status is being generated through public exposure in the newspapers, as if the city has already approved it. And the city hasn't approved it. And if it's got anything to do with a modification of this concept plan, and threatens the Riverwalk or the overall development, because it's out of sync with due process, and the planning commission's city's approval, then I think you're, you're walking on some pretty thin ice in terms of the legality of it, because you've got to remember, we're, we get challenged from left to right with Luba, and, you know, and, and Luba will take, and they'll run with this thing because of the public participation factor, which I think we've done a really good job on, on this thing. But I'm really, I'm really kind of cautious about us going, like Mayor Dan says, to the left or to the right on something, when we should be taking our core values and what we've done here in approving this, this plan, and keeping, keeping that in, in mind. This thing is still delicate in terms of, of approval processes and permits and things of that nature, so that's, that's my, that's my concern.
Matt? Were you reaching for the mic?
No, I was just trying to-
Oh. Commissioner Heckin?
One comment, and just two quick questions. One, I really see this as an opportunity to be bold, and that we're, we're in the act of place making here, and I think if it's something that initially scares us, that not just to push it aside. I wish Charles was here, because early in these conversations, we talked about how great of a site Grand Bell Island is in British Columbia, and it's, it's something I, I would hope, not that we could replicate, but look at and see, you know, is it human scale, is walkable, and does it just, is it by itself a great place without, you know, the greater part of the city? And I think that there's opportunities all over the place there. But particularly for traffic, I think that is really, really, you know, where this project lives and dies, and we have to have to get that right. I'm, I'm leaning on the side of the fence, or the more that we can restrict four-wheel vehicular traffic, the better, but somehow, we have to figure that out. So two quick questions are, for sake of the audience, if you could review what the next major milestones for your work will be? And then also, is there any intention, either implied or not, on tying in the, some continuity with the Riverwalk without either other cities or other Riverwalks within the region? So I, we have a couple of good examples, be it Spurner Trail, the Metrola Trail, it's just, there's other walkways. So is this going to be uniquely a discreet Oregon City, or is this going to be something like? That's us. Okay. Don't be so cold.
Our next milestone, okay, so, can I ask a comment, just briefly, on the, your transportation comment?
Sure.
Just in the sense that it is of a high priority, and I guess it does, in a sense, feed into the, the response to the milestone question, which is, it is really, really critical, and one of the things we're looking at through a lot of lenses, but one is, from our team's point of views, to make sure that there are many, many different ways to move through and get to the site, and that, of course, traffic and automobiles are an important component, but also maintaining as many points of access, different ways of access. We've had conversations about water access and bicycle, bicycle access, and can you connect to the bluff? And so it is a really key conversation, and we feel needs to be looked at through a lot of different lenses. So, yeah, the, the next steps for our team in terms of the Riverwalk evolution is that we are working now to kind of finalize this first round of individual stakeholder, holder meetings, so we've done several in the last few days, and we have a few more to do in terms of that, that first outreach. By no means is it expected that that's the last time that we'll talk to those groups, but that first, kind of gathering that input. We will take that feedback and all the feedback that has led up to this point, and the technical investigations that have been done so far, and we will begin to develop alternatives for what I tend to call frameworks for the Riverwalk. So where you have the framework development plan that kind of locates different uses on the site, and right now, the Riverwalk is shown as an orange line through a series of green spaces, it's the next evolution of, of alternatives for how to look at some of those spaces. And there'll be many different possibilities explored. And again, those will encompass, they will encompass the four core values, so we are not simply drawing different alignments for a path, we are learning and working to integrate habitat restoration and preservation, as well as cultural and historical interpretation, and the economic redevelopment potential. So those alternative, alternatives will embody initial ideas about how to give physical form to that, and I think that is a big next step that this team will be making, and by no means is it the, here it is, and this is, we decided that it will start to give spatial qualities, because again, it's a very three-dimensional study, so in some places, that may mean that it's a path on, on the ground, and others, it may be integrated into an existing structure in some way of using that structure. It's, in our minds, a very three-dimensional spatial study, as well as some of the ideas that were brought up earlier about gathering spaces and plazas and places where they could be used in, you know, in many different ways. So we'll, we'll be doing that in conjunction with looking at some of those elements in more detail, also about how people will, people will experience the site or connect to the site and to those different components of habitat and cultural interpretation. So while we'll be looking at bigger concept ideas, we'll also be studying ways to engage the site. And what we mean by that is, again, we're really thinking carefully about how to engage with what's already there, and how you create strategies or approaches for adding new elements where you need new elements. And so those are much more kind of physical, tangible studies that we'll start doing. We'll come back in the fall, well, there'll be many kind of check-ins during that process to inform that process, but once we get to a, a point with that, we'll, we'll come back in the fall to have a next community engagement meeting to get feedback on that work.
Good attention on everything. I was just gonna, if you don't mind, just to comment about the process. Some people have waited a very long time for this to happen, and people that have lived in the community have waited their lifetimes to see a change down here, and we really understand the importance of that, but we're also getting a lot of feedback, and was reinforced by the Rediscover the Falls group we met with earlier today, is they say, do it right. If you have to take time with it, at least do it right, and keep us involved, keep us, you know, informed, but don't take shortcuts, and don't skip opportunities, and don't miss things, and get it wrong. So I think, you know, it's, it's frustrating for people not to see something happening right away, when is groundbreaking, you know? And this is the most complicated site any of us have worked on, and certainly, we're learning more about it every single time we go out there, and every time we have a meeting with stakeholders. So please be patient with us, it's just taking a while.
Commissioner Gough?
I appreciate that. You didn't answer the scientific part of the question, but I'll try to be quicker.
Other Riverwalks.
Other Riverwalks. I think that, of course, there are similarities to other places, because there are other places that have access to rivers, and other places who have even done that in industrial sites that are, that have a historic industrial use and many other uses.
Granville Island's a good example.
Granville's a great example, and, and one of our teammates was directly involved in the design and evolution of Granville Island. The short answer is, I think we expect this to be very unique to this place, and while you may see similarities or connections to others, it's intended to be of this place and for this place.
What about Mill Ruin?
In Minneapolis?
Yes.
Sure, I, I, yeah, I mean, again, I think that there, you know, there are many places like Mill Ruin that, that capture some of the essence, and there's some similarities, but we've not, we've not yet put our finger on something that's precisely the same.
Commissioner Gough? Just a, kind of a quick question. You kind of touched on it there, for a minute. We're not rushing, we're taking our time to looking at it, but I can't believe how many people thought we were going to start building it this summer. And when I put this in motion as a planning commission to adopt the concept plan, I can't think, I hope I see this in my lifetime. And I'm wondering, do we have any better idea that we're going to make some decisions by 2017, 18, or 19? Or do we think that we're just going to keep taking in more information and more information, then we're going to change our minds and take in more information? Or do we see some end date where we're going to say, okay, that's what we've got?
So do you know your expiration date, Tom? He's got a couple years' time. So I'm going to step in here for a second. One of the biggest things that gets me is, I was back at the United States Conference of Mayors a month or so ago, and had a small-town mayor from New York come up to me and go, hey, you're that place with that big mill thing, right? So we spent about a half an hour talking about it. So this is not just Oregon City, it's not just Clackamas County, it's not even just the state of Oregon, this is going to be a nationally significant site, and so we do have to be very careful about everything that we put here, and everything that we do here. And so, you know, I just want to reiterate that fact that this really, you know, is something that you're going to be able to, when conventions come to the Portland Convention Center, they're going to send tours out here. And just to talk a little bit about traffic, remember, our theory is, what we're looking for is to have people actually living here. And so we have to remember that people who live in Oregon typically drive cars. You know, we're far enough away from downtown Portland, and although we want the site to be as absolutely walkable and pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly and all that stuff, we still have to remember that we're going to have to accommodate a certain number of vehicles. The one thing that encourages me is that there's a lot of underground space that currently isn't used, and, you know, so maybe we could redesign that, use it as parking structures, and the fact is, is that even if we're to flood, the floods we get, we know they're coming for at least a week. So you can get everything out of there, plug everything up, the water could go through, you sweep it out, you plug it back in, and we're, we're back at, at work again. So I, I think while we have to be, you know, absolutely have to be careful about, and that's why I'm so excited that we have this huge group of people, you know, this core, and then the Legacy Project Partners, and then, you know, we have the general public, there's going to be so many eyes on this, that I am confident that at the end of the day, we're going to come to something that everybody's going to be really excited about. The last point I wanted to make, and this is just sort of a, goes back to my, my childhood here in Oregon City. I recall, and I don't know why they won't let them sturgeon fish off the, off this bank of the river now, what? Do you know why?
Off the wall?
Yeah. But I would like to see-
We found that out.
In spaces on the Riverwalk, that, that people would actually be able to get down and bank fish on the river, whether it's for Sam and Steelhead and/or Sturgeon.
I thought, like, the reason that they stopped, I think it was more just literate problems and that than it was anything else, but-
It also had to do with acres.
Right, right.
Just says the sad situation. Can I get back to my question? How long are we going to vet, how long are we going to vet this? Until 2018, 19? How long does this process go before we actually see some start?
There is some funding involved, so there's- There is some funding involved, so there's shelf life to the funding. It doesn't live forever. So we really want to look at this fall to develop these alternative concepts for you all to look at. And then by early winter, sometime in 17, we're going to be looking at a preferred concept that, and it may very well likely be pieces of the alternatives that we show you because we're going to look, some easy places on that site and some not so easy.
So that's winter of 2017, so we may not see anything until 18 or 19.
Probably we're talking, you know, groundbreaking at phase one.
Spring is 2018.
Yeah, I would add two things. One is, we're looking for ways to front-load some of the work. So if there are, if we can selectively demolish pieces of the site that need to be removed for one reason or another, that's something that could happen, we would want to try to front-load that. Also, the habitat restoration is something that we want to try to identify places where that can kind of begin without holding up the process. And then the other, the other point that we've been looking for ideas about are how to get people on the site in addition to the tours that everyone's already been doing. So means of interim access, interim use, and maybe even getting the site out to the rest of the community in other ways.
You have a question I've heard a lot of people ask me, well, is it going to go right up to the falls? Is it going to end right about here or is it going to walk out so they can get right next to them? Or where is it going to end or do we even know that yet?
We don't know yet.
They've heard, people have heard that there's ponds there that are holding chemicals and that the city has to drive those up and remove them before they can use the water. I hear so many stories.
I think we don't, we don't know yet and part of what we're exploring is multiple locations to gain access. And I think one of the things in that early phase, could we think about this in phases? Is that you, how far do you get in proximity to the falls in that phase one and what may come later?
Christine and I were talking earlier, any brochures that they can give to downtown merchants? Because we get so much of the people coming down or looking, if you have something that we can hand out to people as they come through, look forward to this in Oregon City's future. And I'm not sure where Christine went, but she was going to give me some brochures I could hand out to people because they all come down, they get this far and, well, we heard you guys were doing something, but it's not done yet. And I'm going, well, it's going to be a while, we're still planning.
So at that, is there a way we could put up, say, a permanent four-by-eight sign somewhere close to down there?
Kelly is actually working on that, so.
Yeah, so the sign has been fabricated and we're ready to actually install it really soon.
And you secured your sign permit?
Not in here already. Boy the Blue Heron or would that be somewhere?
We'll figure it out, but there'll be someplace close enough that people will be drawn to it and that can answer some basic questions like, no, there aren't, you know, pools of tar and, you know, other things just waiting to be released into the Lamont River, it always knows.
So who was up? Christopher Mayberg?
So I know this site is complex and daunting and exciting and full of potential, but it's also in a much larger context of other initiatives that are happening right now that are as exciting, not as exciting, almost as exciting. The locks, of course, and the Lamont Falls Heritage Area and Momentum and Energy and Oregon City Connections all through those. And then right across the river is what some might consider an eyesore at the Blue Heron site. And is there any discussion at all about how to make that a little bit nicer to look at?
Careful to be trending on Mayor Axelrod's jobs, by the way, so we want to be careful about that.
You're speaking across river about the Westland paper.
Yes.
Well, certainly, your point, I think, is really important that this is set within a much larger context and that is a lot of the conversation that drives the input that we receive that, and even just earlier today, we were meeting with some of the Downtown Association and talking about the broader context and making sure that it's complementary and integrating. The answer to your question about across the river, no, I can't say that we've yet had any specific conversation about how to improve that. I mean, we have heard ideas from others about lighting and other ways to think about the site across the river. I think, in fact, what more we have been able to talk about is really considering that there are multiple views and vantage points and ways to experience this site and that not everybody has this, you know, this is a place that is, hopefully will have something for everyone, but isn't everything to everyone. And people have different tastes and different opinions. So, you know, there's a lot of potential to capture longer views, reorient how you engage with the waterfall and view the fall, maybe even places where the, you don't necessarily see the falls, but you hear it or you have a different sense for it. So one of the things that is, I think, really interesting to us is to find ways to engage all of our senses. So no, I don't know yet if there is any way to really directly sort of consider what's across the way, but there are ways to really think about a very, a variety of experiences.
I have two responses to that comment. One is that when we're done with this, it is kind of cool to be able to look across the river and see where this came from. So, you know, and the other piece that I have talked to Mayor Axelrod, he has connections with, and Dave Barnar, who is Wilsonville Concrete Products, they're the guys that do a lot of the water work up and down the river and have been taking care of the locks for the last 60 years or so. That the island area between, just would be the southern tip of that whole area, there's a big space there that's got buildings on it, they don't use any of that anymore. So they're actively talking about how maybe that piece could be redeveloped in sort of the same timeframe. There's an access issue there that they have to work out over the locks and, you know, so maybe a new bridge or something that would, that could get them down to that site. But there's at least a piece there that could be, you know, redeveloped. You know, there's a ton of ideas about, you know, zip lines and gondolas and all kinds of different crazy things, you know, that will happen, you know, or not, over time. But I think we can connect it, but I still like the dichotomy of, you know, working mill here and redevelopment here.
Why, that would really switch things over, wouldn't it? Okay, what's that?
Rocky and I sat on the Lamont Falls Heritage Foundation for a few years and I know the locks shut down. Are they, are they reopened now?
No, locks are closed. They'll be, without some kind of a minor miracle, they'll probably be closed for the next at least couple of years, even though the state has provided funding, about $400,000 that should take care of most of the critical repairs. But there are, just thinking about the Army Corps of Engineers takes six years. So, you know, there's at least a five-year process for us to get from where we are, you know, we've got the, the governor has a task force on the locks. I sit on that with, along with a bunch of other folks and work, you know, one of my chief complaints and they air from me all the time is, why does everything take so long? So, but, you know, I've been in government a long time and I know that, you know, people out there, they say, oh, look, they're going to do that project and they think of it like, you know, building a garage under their house. Well, you know, this is a lot more complicated, it's a lot bigger, and there's still a lot of unanswered questions, particularly the $60 to $70 million worth of public infrastructure we're going to have to put here. And that's not just the Riverwalk, but, you know, we've got streets to build and water lines and sewer lines and electrical power and communications and all those other kinds of things. So there's still a ton of very hard work in front of us, but I look at the Riverwalk as that thing that's going to catalyze the rest of the stuff that's going to happen on the private side or something.
So the Riverwalk could be done before the locks open?
Oh, guaranteed the Riverwalk, long before the locks reopen, yeah.
I want to be mindful of the time and.
Don't worry, I'm mindful, sorry.
We're happy to keep talking as long as you would like to.
I want to make sure that all of the commissioners here have had an opportunity to get whatever questions they have answered. Unusual for us, we are, you know, ahead of schedule a little bit, so if you have something else to ask or something else to say, you know, raise your hand. Well, okay then. I want to thank all three of you folks and especially your teams. I know you're, you know, you're kind of working out there in a hazy fog right now, trying to figure out where everybody's at and what this thing might look like. And for me, you know, I'm at a year and a half, almost two years being mayor and I'm just hoping that I get to see something come out of the ground before I'm not mayor anymore. So. Your hand? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not concerned so much about the Riverwalk, I'm pretty certain that we'll be able to start construction sometime in first quarter or so of 2018. I'm really more concerned about seeing something out, coming out on the private side before, you know, 2024, so. Bob, you have that look?
Well, your comment raised a question about this financing. You say the clock is ticking on some of these funds and there might be a kind of a calendar by which they expire or something along those lines, so something's got to be done.
Oh, don't worry about it. That's all timed in the schedule, the partners are keeping very close track of that. I don't anticipate us running into that problem. The bigger dollars are about, especially on the private side, the public infrastructure we're going to have to put in there, who's going to pay for it? You know, that's why I'm going back to Washington DC in January for the Winter Conference, the US Conference of Mayors. I haven't told Tony yet, but he's going to come with me. And we're going to, we're going to be working on, you know, our congressional delegation and other congressional delegations about how to find the money to get some of this stuff done.
For water and sewer and streets?
Yeah.
Commissioner Guo? The Riverwalk is being done separately of this development, correctly? I know this is privately owned, but.
We're trying to work and plan those as much as we can together in a concurrent process.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
So I know that we have discussed that some buildings may come out, some may stay. Would some of that begin before they start Riverwalk? Do you think?
Yeah, that's what Matt was saying, that, you know, a lot of those buildings, especially some of the stuff that's towards the front, towards 99, are just basically steel and steel siding and, you know, they were just industrial buildings without, not a whole lot of history or, you know, real value. So I think that the team, not only this team, but in the previous getting to this concept plan, identified five or six major structures that we probably want to keep, but a lot of that is, again, just sheet metal and 1960s industrial crummy construction that can go away. I have every confidence that the team and everybody working on this is going to do everything they can to retain everything we can that has historical significance.
Another misconception I've heard from some people, they heard that somehow the city was going to build a parking structure down in here somewhere near the front so that would eliminate traffic going down here and pick up some of this down here. Was there any?
What I like to tell people is that this is a bowl of Jell-O and we haven't even put the Jell-O in the water yet. So, you know, we're just trying to figure out what flavor it is.
I keep telling them, I don't know.
Well, and that's the thing, you say, you know, don't listen to any rumors you hear. If you want real information, come to one of the design collective meetings and, you know, what information we have will be shared at that time. And, you know, again, you know, this is like just barely a design. There's a ton of work left to do and there's a ton of decisions left to be made. And the more people are out there talking about, well, this is going to happen, that's going to happen, well, you know, if the four of us commissioners don't know what's going to happen, I'm pretty sure nobody else does.
Pretty true.
Sheriff?
I was just going to reflect a second on a comment that I heard today at the Rediscover the Falls group. And they were, they were just delightful and you could feel the energy and excitement in the room and, you know, it gets us juiced up. We need that juicing up once in a while because this is a really rigorous process for us. And specifically, the comment was, "I can't wait for the magic to happen." And I, you know, I just, we need that once in a while because we get, you know, there's a lot of process and a lot of information and every, you know, as I said, every time we go out there, we're learning something new. And it's going to be put through a very rigorous process of review by all of you in this room, by the public, by the regulators, by, you know, the.
You haven't mentioned regulators.
I keep mentioning that, when people think magic, that anything is possible, you know, we know that it's not, you know, and we want to bring the highest level of creativity and thinking outside the box, but we're very grounded in this place. So, you know, that's where I think the magic will happen, is getting the best solution for all these components that works for the place that we have and that takes it to the highest level and advantage. And this is a moment in time that we have something that we can all embrace and it really is very, needs to be very well thought out.
Well, I think the magic is happening. You know, if you take the picture of the three witches around the boiling cauldron, that's the three members of the design team.
Okay. That's something that'll stick with us.
You can see the Jell-O.
Maybe it's the Jell-O.
One more, no, my job, keep short.
I think the key to this whole thing is people. The more people you can attract to that site, the more opportunities going to present to the investment. All the way back to Washington DC, we're going to see, this thing works, it's feasible, let's get our money into the pot, pay for those capital improvement programs for water, sewers, streets, et cetera. But you've got to have people because people spend money. And those merchants down there will invest in the commercial enterprises and things of that nature. And then you can figure out the management of people and how to move them safely across that McLaughlin Boulevard and you've got, then the magic happens. But people is the thing that you've got to have. You've got to plan, not just for the Riverwalk, but for people. Once you do that, then you solve 95% of the problem right there.
Commissioner Gray?
I have a quote, which I have kept on my phone, and if Alan was here, he'd probably be blushing right now, but at one of the sessions, he said that the community or that the design team wants to see local people shopping and using the area. And if other people come, that's okay, but the local community needs to be the one to initially embrace the site. So that's a quote from him.
And that's Alan Bonifus.
Yes.
So true.
And I think our community is embracing it.
Everybody else? Then we're adjourned.
So Director Turman, would you like to get us started? Sure, thank you very much. So the Planning Division has proposed a Type 1 Site Plan Design Review Process, which is a quicker way for businesses to do minor improvements to their sites. So instead of having a longer process, it would be a shorter process without compromising any of our development review standards. So we took this proposal to Planning Commission and Planning Commission reviewed it and they recommended approval to the City Commission. But one of the changes that they made was to not apply this process in historic districts or individually designated sites. So we went to the City Commission and we explained that. The reasons that the Planning Commission identified for this limitation was, one, that it was important to maintain that public notification process. This process is only applicable to non-discretionary items and despite that, the Planning Commission felt that it was very important to still have that public notice, despite it being non-discretionary. The second one is that they're not making the process harder, they're just keeping it the same. And then the third reason was that people are more, maybe more inclined to be more sensitive or to have better development if they know it's going through a public review process. At the City Commission, the City Commission had a couple of questions for the Planning Commission regarding these issues and we already had this work session scheduled. So now we just have a few minutes to sort of talk about that before it goes back to City Commission. So it's on pause at City Commission for the moment. It'll come back for, hopefully, we'll be asked. It'll come back for, hopefully, we'll be asking for the first reading at the next city commission hearing.
Who wants to go first? Commissioner Smith?
So I think the question that we had was, you know, whether or not we were missing anything because from our point of view, that process was going to be a long, well, would be, you know, a fairly long process and the outcome wouldn't necessarily be any different.
Wouldn't be any different.
Right. So I, that's basically the dialogue that we had.
What do you mean by a long process?
Well, so as far as what we understood, that these are proposals that are cut and dried, black and white, they're either allowed or they're not allowed. And so when you, when it, this is no longer in a type one process, then it's substantially more expensive and it takes substantially longer to get through the approval process. And given the fact that these are absolute black and white decisions, that there is no interpretive, there is no interpretation involved, it didn't really matter whether it was historic property or historic district, it was going to be approved on the merits based on the absolute black and white code. Is that a fair description?
That is correct.
So...
Except for it's a designated structure.
Historics.
If it requires additional review, like historic review board or...
Yeah, so, you know, if it's something that's going to have to go through historic review, it's not going to qualify for this process anyway.
Correct.
If it's something that has to go through, say, a natural resources overlay district, it's going to have another, another process, therefore it wouldn't qualify for this process. So Commissioner McGree?
Well, maybe I can help with this. The design guidelines in both of the historic districts in Oregon City were developed to enhance and provide compatibility through a public process. They were developed in conjunction with a consulting team, the community, the planning commission, the historic review board, and finally, the city commission. Regardless of whether the property is designated or not, an adjacent historic property next to something that is not designated can be affected. And that is one of the things that we look at in the code and type in chapter 1740. We look at the compatibility of that particular building vis a vis the other historic sites that may be around it. An example that I could give you would be the recent redo of the old bank building at 615 High. The neighborhood association and the applicant sat down prior to the time that he actually even applied, and we talked about what it was that he was proposing to do. And he was looking for ideas from the community about how that property could be new and fixed up, but also be compatible with the adjacent historic structures that were around it. I know that some of the comments that he received from the neighborhood association were helpful to him and he implemented those. It was helpful from the neighborhood standpoint to be able to participate with that person, receive notice, and also work with them. And that has been the experience, at least in the McLaughlin district. I can't speak for the Kanema neighborhood because I, of course, don't, not involved with them as much as others. So that was one of the reasons. We talked about the whole issue of compatibility, and even though it's black and white, I would say that a suggestion could come up, for instance, let's say somebody wanted to put in brand-new windows. Well, let's say that they were going to use, think of an example, possibly white, as opposed to maybe something that was darker. Now, the code doesn't say that, but because there are specific design guidelines in those specific districts, you're already at a higher standard. And we felt the, well, not the majority of us, but I'd say the majority of the commission, we debated this quite a bit because everybody said, well, isn't it just discretionary? Isn't it just black and white? I said, well, when it comes to the historic district, we already have a higher level of review. We already have that level of review. So in my opinion, dropping those down doesn't give it the same level of review that we've previously had. And I don't think that you can say that in that particular district, again, I can't speak for Kanema, I can only speak for McLaughlin, that we have had any issues with the process and it taking longer or not longer. So it's not changing. It's not making any change to it at all. We just said, we felt that this part of it, because we already have a higher level of review, that we should keep that higher level of review. And that's the best way, you know, that I can explain it. I don't think that the planning commission is interested in causing more time and effort for anyone, but the Hilltop has a different level of review than McLaughlin or Kanema, and it deserves the additional review that comes with being in those districts, whether it's a designated building or not.
But I'm confused about this review piece because...
The public is allowed to be involved. That's the review, that's the part that's not there, going to be there anymore.
But the public isn't involved. How do I, how do I try to explain where I'm at with it? Where I'm at with this is, is that especially in our first, and Renata, you weren't there, for the first goal-setting session we had, you'll be here January when we do the next one, I assume. But one of the things that we, that our mission was when the three of us were elected, was that to promote and push for economic development. And a lot of what this type one review is, is really about commercial development, not necessarily residential. And so these things are, you know, you either are allowed to do it in the city or you're not allowed to do it in the city. It's just that simple. So why would that be any different in the historic area than in the nonhistoric area? It just doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense to me to add a layer of, quote, review on something that really isn't reviewable.
We're not adding a layer of review. That's the current level of review right now. Again, because we have specific design guidelines in those districts that other areas don't have, we're not taking anything away. We're just keeping it the exact same. It does not preclude economic development. As a matter of fact, it actually, in my opinion, promotes it. It's not really an economic development issue. It's an issue of design review, compatibility, and also continuing to allow the public to participate in the process.
So I do have one point, though. If there was a standard that said it has to be compatible with, that would make it discretionary, so it wouldn't apply to the type one. The type one would be more numerical, so you have to have X percent of windows and you can get 10 people to measure that and they would have the same answer. If it's a question where you get 10 people and some answers would be one and there would be some answers would be something else, then it automatically wouldn't apply. So if it requires historic review board review, so it's an individually designated structure in McLaughlin, or it meets that definition of new construction, which is 30% or more of the original square footage, then that's automatically sort of off the table.
Yeah, and we talked about that, but again, a non-designated structure can, on its face, compromise an adjacent historic structure. When we were looking at the Chase Carriage House, some of the things that they were talking about doing could potentially create a conflict. But we have design guidelines which are a little, you know, which are a little less discretionary. I mean, they allow for a level of review where you're making a, an opinion. In having discussions about those compatibility items, we were able to come to a conclusion that, okay, if you do X, this is what the effect will be, if you do Y, this is what the effect will be. They chose to take the lesser of the two impacts.
And just the other side note that we didn't already talk about was that, so we're talking about the difference between a type two site plan designer view, minor site plan designer view, and a type one minor site plan and design review, which sounds very technical, but either case, don't require a meeting with the neighborhood association, although in our documentations and talking with applicants, we always encourage them to meet with neighborhood associations, but either way, the shorter way or the relatively longer way, which is not that long, doesn't require that level of involvement. What it does require for the public notification piece is that we post signs on the property, we mail notices to neighbors within 300 feet, we post it on our website and send an email link out to 70 people, including all neighborhood associations. So that's the public notification piece. They're not necessarily required to meet with each neighborhood individually or the one that they're working in.
Or either one, either a type one or a type two.
Correct.
Okay, so I'd be interested in hearing from the other planning commissioners that we have here.
Thing that bothers me is, I'm confused about the whole damn thing. And I shouldn't be, and I shouldn't be, really. You know, I've been issued so many rules and regulations before in my life, and one of the things that you want to do is abide by the law. It's either yes or it's either no, and it's simple. And the public can respond to that because they understand it. They understand it. And it's speedy, a due process should be speedy and timely. And you don't hold things up because of somebody's opinion. Now, I might be oversimplifying my understanding of what's going on here, but that type one, if it's non-discretionary and it meets all qualifications and the qualifications are set up so that people can understand them, you don't have to be erotic science, then fine, issue the building permit and away you go. Then you start getting involved in a little bit more intricate and sophisticated review process and get the public involved, that's fine and dandy, but somebody has to make that determination, and it's usually done at these staff levels that we're paying some pretty good money to keep those, those bullets filled. Okay? So let's use those people. I don't want to see the planning commission get involved and getting down in the weeds with all this stuff, because after all, if there's not standards that are clear and objective, then it's our opinion. And I don't want to exercise my opinion. I want to exercise...
We're not changing the process.
And I'm not paying for anything anymore.
He already said you were paying for the Riverwalk. You got you on record for that.
Well, if I'm paying for the Riverwalk, then I'm going to, but you see what I'm getting at?
I do.
Keep it simple, and I'm all for public involvement, but you send out $10,000 for the notifications and three people show up. Or you send it to a, to a committee and you barely get a quarter. So if their input isn't going to make any difference anyway, why put them on the spot? Why put the city on the spot? So let's keep it simple.
Commissioner Gile?
Microphone.
No, I got it, I'm keeping it.
Actually, I was not present at the meeting where it was thoroughly discussed with Paul being there and Charles, I just had the surgery, so I'm not as aware of all the discussions, discussions that went on. Just hearing tonight, I understand Paul's point of view, but we are making it complicated and probably a little more costly. I also understand McLaughlin neighborhood, Kanema, want to protect their interest of having things compatible. So I'm torn right now myself, just by only what I've heard tonight, so.
Okay, well, let me, let me see if I can unconfuse you. Okay, so Ms. Turway?
Yes.
Back there. Yes, I'm asking Ms. Turway a question. Even if we leave these, the historic, even if we leave these guys out of the historic district as far as, let's say we leave it exactly the same. Okay, so we're going to do the type one for everybody outside of McLaughlin and Kanema. These decisions are still yes or no decisions, right?
That is correct. The decision, it's still not discretionary, so there is no opinion based on the decision. It either meets some mathematical standard, the material is either on our prohibited list or it's not.
And to follow up with that, the difference between the cost and timetable for this type one process or the other process is what?
The current process, from start to finish with the planning division, can be about four months, and with this, some will be over the counter, so maybe 20 minutes, 10 minutes, and some may be a week or so, depending on what you're doing and the level of complexity. The price is about $850 right now, and we'll be coming back to you soon with an amended price, which will be much lower, probably 200-ish range.
Okay. So what I look at, from a business standpoint, is, you know, you're talking about 600 more dollars or more for the process that's currently here and four months. Now, the dollars probably don't matter quite so much, they could, you know, for some folks, but the timeframe, that's, that's a huge amount of time to be wasted on a process that is going to end up in exactly the same place when it's over. That's, that's my key argument, that it's going to be either yes or no if it's issued over the counter in 20 minutes, and it's going to be the same yes or no answer after four months. Then can I ask a question?
Sure.
Of Denise, that how, what he just said, Laura, how's that different than what you're thinking that, that needs that process? You know what I'm saying?
Because the, the project could change through that process because the person bringing the project forward is now thinking it in line with what? So it gives the option, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
But he's already made the standard.
Well, I understand.
Maybe.
No, no, it's not maybe, it's yes or no. That's what I understand, black and white.
Sorry, I don't have the mic, but anyway, so...
Can you pass the mic on to her? I'm going to, I'm going to let this go until 10 after and then we're going to...
Well, I don't, I don't really think there's any, you know, if we're basing, changing our code on whether it's costing more or costing less, I get down to the part of, we have a participatory government, and I will generally side on involving people as much as they possibly can. And again, as I've said, that my experience has been, the time that has taken to get through one of these processes has been streamlined because generally, we have had an opportunity to meet with someone ahead of time and say, hey, did you think about this, this, or that? I don't know whether that opportunity will be available anymore. I know that the city has been great and we've had a great experience working with people who do things to their properties in the district. Some of them understand that they are in a district and that they need to have a little bit higher level of material or things that they might be proposing, but I don't like precluding the public from being involved. And I think that there are standards and guidelines that do involve some discretion in the historic districts that are not afforded to other areas of the city. And so our recommendation was not to change the process.
Okay, thank you.
So that's really the bottom line.
Oh, he can have mine.
Really nothing else?
Commissioner Henken?
No, we're done. I'm done.
Yeah, just generally, I echo a lot of that economic development emphasis on, I hate to say it, I mean, sort of the type one, simple questions. And if we can codify it, make it black and white, move forward, let's do that. I think, I don't think that this is an issue that we should just let go away, but if we have some specific requirements that we want to put in there, put it into that standard process and then we can get out of the guideline process. Make it so we can't, but we can just check the boxes, say the color of the wood will be brown. But, you know, I keep, my point of view in this is my house is a 1954 early ranch and that nowadays is considered historic.
You bet.
So we have to be careful where we put it because, you know, to a lot of folks, that's not historic and not reserved, but, you know, I, my windows are mine. So, in any cases.
Okay. Commissioner Maguire? Go ahead.
So the $800 or $600 that the person is not, not spending on the streamlined process is more money that they could be investing in doing quality siding, windows, enhancing the building. And we want to be encouraging folks to invest and improve their property. So I'm all for making the process as easy, as fast, and as clear as possible. And if there are areas of discretion, that's a great, where it's not quite black and white, maybe that's a great project for the historic review board or the McLaughlin neighborhood association to clarify exactly, well, it has to be this shade of maroon or it has to be burgundy, but this is what we want, so it is clear and black and white. And I have complete confidence in our fantastic staff to provide really good guidance to our applicants.
And projects that have that discretion don't qualify for this process. So I think we've heard everything we need to hear. We will have this discussion again a week from tomorrow and, you know, we can be used up all we want at that point and make this happen. So with that, we will adjourn. This meeting...